I'll call the regular meeting of Hanwell Council to order December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven oh four. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda with the amendments?
I move to approve the agenda with the following amendments. The date of this meeting is February twenty-four first, not February fourteenth. Add twelve F donation request and remove nineteen A closed session.
Oh, second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried. Thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt the minutes for we have three meetings, a regular and two specials?
I move to adopt the minutes of the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting of council.
Oh, second.
Questions, errors, omissions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried. Thank you. Need a motion to adopt the minutes December thirteenth, special meeting?
I move to adopt the minutes of December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, special meeting of council.
Oh, second.
Questions, comments, errors, omissions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried. Thank you, council. And a motion to for adopting the minutes from December twenty twentieth.
I'll move to adopt the minutes of December twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, special meeting of council.
Oh, second.
Questions, errors, omissions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried. Thank you. Item four, public input. I don't believe we have anybody else in public here tonight for input, so we'll move on. Disclosures, council? None? Okay, moving on to item six, reports fire department. Chief Gross.
Evening, mayor, council. I believe you all got a copy of December. Run. You can see we had sixty runs in December. And a lot were down power lines. And warming. Homes as well as had no water. Or. Flushing and so on. As well as throwing a structure fire. It was our turn this year, usually right around Christmas. There's a structure fire somewhere in the capital district. And this year it was us, so. And. For twenty twenty-three. We had four hundred and fifty-nine incidents. Three hundred and nine was fire calls for dispatch with four five nine. The rest would be training and meetings. Truck checks, that sort of thing. And. Awful close to seven or ten thousand hours. Man hours for twenty twenty-three.
That's a lot. So, any questions for chief?
The report that was sent out only goes to December eighteenth.
It does?
Yeah.
I have the third page.
I must be missing a couple pages.
Yeah, we have. We're missing two pages.
Yeah, you only brought me one page. I never even thought to check.
Oh, I suppose. One page?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry about that.
I mean, it doesn't matter.
I'll leave this with you.
I'll make up, yeah.
And you can copy this.
Yeah.
You're human.
Yeah, I think Brenner. I think Brenner. It's okay, you're all, you're.
I think it's the operator myself, but anyway. Chief, any idea how many houses you guys heated during the power outage?
Oh. I'm thinking over fifty.
Wow. Why is that?
We went to a lot of them like second, third time.
Wow.
There's elderly people and so on, so we'd go and warm them up. And then a few hours later, you know, five or six hours later, we'd drop back. And we done that quite steady with some people. Depends how feeble and stuff if it were, you know what I mean?
Just exactly.
What kind of shape they were in and that sort of thing, so.
I heard some comments back. It was certainly much appreciated, so it was really good. It was certainly needed. Counselor Fox, you had a question?
Well, I just, no, I just wanted to say thanks for the, especially for that warming. Like, I know, I know people really did appreciate it. And it was great actually seeing the, some of the firefighters in here. Kind of getting warmed up and having something to between, between shifts running back and forth, so anyway.
We had three vehicles. We had two. We owned one of those heaters. And once it started, got a hold of. What do they call it?
Battlefield.
Yeah, battlefield rungs. I never knew they existed. And they had some, so we grabbed two right away because United and them were gone. They had nothing. So we grabbed them and actually used the Hamel apton. Our four by four and the chief tractor, command one. And that's what we used with the generator and went around and warmed them up.
So what is it, like just a Herman Nelson or something? You just run the hoses into the?
Yeah. They're built, you see a lot of them being used now, like on construction sites. You know, back in the day where we had the old salamanders. Come home at the end of the day, smell like diesel and propane. And no, these here exhaust, they have their own exhaust outside. They run the tubes in. Well, Mr. Kempster, you remember what somebody said they had?
Come out the animals like a hundred and sixty?
Yeah, one inch tube, they're twelve inch tubes.
Wow.
It'd take long, huh?
Kind of heat up a house in a hurry.
They do, they do. And the biggest thing, as everyone knows anyway, is depends on, not only on the age of the people and stuff is. Because it's too damn cold and mad water lines freezing and sweating, oh my god.
Been quite a mess then.
All wood, that's all. Anyway, kept us hopping and it had three crews most of the time. Out there doing it.
Standing.
So the run stayed with that. Last sort of call in every once in a while, motor vehicle accident or.
Certainly it was a busy time.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the chief?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you, chief. Good report.
Okay, so I'll give motion to receive fire alarm report. Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Now, presentation. With a gentleman from Greener Village, we've got his presentation lined up on the big TV.
Do I have to hit something or?
No, you should be able to do it right from there, I think.
Oh. I think the TV fell asleep.
I don't really care to do Zoom. Use our backs. No, no problem at all. Just make sure that this works properly. I think they keep falling. I guess they have that little slider thing. Thank you, mayor and council, for having me in to present our project. Something that we think is going to have a huge impact for the entire province. It's a pleasure to be able to do it and we're grateful for that. So this is a presentation on transforming food security in Brunswick. And it's what we're effectively naming the Thrive Campaign. It's our campaign to build Atlanta Canada's first ever food rescue center. So we're going to talk a little bit first about our organization. So we, our mission is pretty simple. We're supporting our community by providing food, clothing, and developmental opportunities that people need on their journey to self-sufficiency. So in case you don't know who Greener Village is, I'm going to be reasonable if you don't. Greener Village actually started as a food bank in church basement in nineteen eighty-three. As a quick five-year response to the economic downturn that followed an economic downturn in the world. Well, that's forty years ago. So obviously that five-year plan was a little bit off of its mark. And I'm fully convinced from my own research of the topic that the reason it was off its mark is because they didn't have a full understanding of food insecurity that was existing before the economic downturn of the time. Food insecurity has always existed in society. And when food banks came onto the scene and there was a formal way for people to get help, not just going to a local person or going to a family member, going to a church and saying, hey, can you help me? But an actual organized way to get help. All of a sudden, the bets were off and people were like, hey, this is amazing. I can actually get the food I need. So that growth was immediate. So the five-year plan actually never got concluded after five years. But in two thousand and eleven, we actually embarked on our first journey to develop ourselves into something beyond what was typically thought of in the food bank world. We purchased a thirteen-inch property down Riverside Drive, just past the Ramada. If you don't know the property, it's beautiful, former greenhouse, former growing operation for plants and poinsettias and all sorts of fun things. So it was a completely blank slate for us, so ten thousand five hundred square foot open warehouse with no dividing wall. So we really could dream about what we wanted to be as an organization, so. In that experience, basically we created a learning kitchen. So a thousand square foot classified learning kitchen with a red seal chef who can teach people how to use their food appropriately, who can teach people how to budget and cook good food, how to take the leftovers and make a meal out of it, how to take the stuff that they're growing in their gardens and make meals out of it, or to prepare it for longer-term use.
Is that Chef Yves?
That's Chef Yves.
You're telling Voltsen's heart.
Okay, I will. Absolutely. We were able to diversify our revenue streams. We created our unique boutique, which is a clothing bank for clients through gift cards, but the general public can also shop and that way we generate revenue to try to offset our costs. In two thousand and fifteen, we're actually able to pay off the mortgage on the property, so we are in a good place for being a soundly managed organization. And that took us up to really right around the two thousand and twenty mark. And just before two thousand and twenty hit, I'm going to tell you the parable of the carrots, and it's a story I've told a lot. I probably will be famous for telling this story because everyone's going to have heard it and it's probably going to drive people crazy. What happens in the food bank network in two thousand and nineteen is that we've got Moncton, which is the provincial food distributor for the food bank network. And then we have sixty-four food banks in the province. They're broken up into five districts. So in District Three, which centers around Fredericton, it's actually as far up as Woodstock, it's right over as Dogtown. It's a fairly large region, but there's thirteen food banks within that District Three. So on this given day, it was a summer day in two thousand and nineteen, the food banks, we knew that they were sending us the tractor trailer of food. So, okay, great. They said, you guys meet, all of you come together, you split up the food based on your agency size and how many people you serve, and then we'll get the food out to the clients and that's the best we can do. It's perfect, no problem. So we all met up on St. Mary's Street, the old co-op. I was actually driving a truck, which is rare, but I'm glad I was this day. And we opened the back of the truck and the entire truck was carrots. In fifty-pound bags, unwashed.
Oh, wow.
And I went, hmm, okay, carrots are good. I mean, carrots are great. I mean, you can eat them raw. You can send them to kids lunch. You can put them into a stew. You can, they're very versatile.
Don't forget Coleslaw.
They're nutrient-rich. They're, they got lots of energy in them. Like, they're just a good food. And as I was thinking all these things in my head, that food bank behind me went, what are we going to do with these? I went, what? They're fresh, healthy food. When you give them to clients? And they said, well, how long can I hold on to them? What happens if they start to go bad and I have to dump them? How am I going to repackage them? I don't have the volunteers to hold on to them. I just did client service two days ago. I don't do another client service for over a week. So how much degradation is there going to be in this product before I even get a chance to give them out? And guys sent me into a little bit of a tailspin to think, oh, we have a problem if we've got good, healthy food that's available to our food bank network, but we don't have a good mechanism to utilize that food. So before we get into talking about the solution to some of those problems, I want to tell you what hunger looks like in New Brunswick. So we are actually the second highest food insecure province in our nation. Twenty-two point seven percent food insecurity index, which means almost one in four people are experiencing food insecurity in New Brunswick. So there's how many of us in the room? Eleven of us, twelve if you include the chief. That means three of the twelve of us statistically will be facing this problem. Now, that is a number that is actually pre-two thousand and twenty-two. So the new number comes out, it's going to become much worse because what we're seeing on the ground in the past two years is a forty-two percent increase in demand for Greener Village for clients from two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two. And a thirty-seven point six percent increase from two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three. So we know that that twenty-two point seven percent number is actually low compared to what it really is. And while we have these gross challenges in our society of food insecurity and increasing demand over the last two years, we have a third problem, a societal problem of food waste. According to Second Harvest, which is the largest food rescue organization in Canada, fifty-eight percent of Canadian produce is discarded. Fifty-eight percent. Like, that's almost two-thirds. That gets clout into the ground. It gets thrown out at the grocery store because it doesn't look tight enough. Or it gets wasted because it doesn't sell in the time that they need to sell it by for it to be at its quality.
That's a couple of something. I apologize for interrupting, but did Canada bread, when they closed their thrift outlet, affect you guys any?
Yeah, the donations dried up. So we used to get a fair bit of donated bread and we do not get that donated bread anymore.
Where it goes now?
Yeah, I think it's livestock feed now.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, unfortunately. Yeah, so now we bake our own. That's a new program we started to try to alleviate some of that missing bread was to bake our own bread in our kitchen.
And Lawrence now decided that they're not going to reduce their prices of the meat products. Yeah, they normally market down fifty percent of it. Not doing that anymore.
No, so there's lots of challenges there for sure. So we have a real problem. Second Harvest Food Insecurity Index, which means thirty percent of kids in New Brunswick are living in households that have food insecurity in them. We know that food insecurity is not just about, oh, I'm a little hungry. Leads to significant issues for health, development. Certainly in the way that kids perform in school and the way people perform in work. I know I've got a thirteen-year-old at home. She's got Crohn's disease. When she isn't well-fed and nourished, she's a miserable person to be around. She gets what they call hangry. She's got, and like, she's not fit to be around and she's not nourished. So some of the issues that we're seeing in our schools is not kids that are bad, it's kids that are unfed. And if we can fix that problem, then we can give them a better outcome. In Atlantic Canada alone, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand tons of food is wasted. Which is enough to feed all of Atlantic Canada for five months. But we don't really have anything in the province that's help, that is equipped to be able to take that product and get it back into the food system. So our project is Atlantic Canada's first ever perishable food rescue center. And so we're looking at focusing on two critical challenges, which is food waste and food insecurity, and using one problem as the solution to the other problem. Certainly mitigate fat. So because of this, we believe we can receive, recover, and distribute a four million dollars worth of fresh food annually, which will of course divert thousands of pounds away from our landfills. I don't know if you've been to our landfills recently, but there's some eagles that are so fat they can't fly up there. There's so much food in our landfills. It's just, it's insane. Because we don't have very good options in kitchens for small businesses, when we put up this facility, we'll be able to house small businesses when we're not using it to do the food rescue part of it. So we can have people who can grow their small food businesses into larger food businesses until they're ready to develop their own facilities. And of course, when we do all of these things, we're going to reduce the impact of climate change because if we've spent resources to create food and then we then throw that food into the landfill and just let it rot, that's a gross misuse of the resources that we're putting into growing that food. And of course, when we do these things, we're going to develop a proof of concept so that this model can be taken to other places in our nation and put into use because the first highest food insecure province in our nation is actually PEI, which is also an extremely rich agriculture space, as we all know. But they're having the same sort of challenges that we are. So we have a couple of interesting partnerships that we were working on this project with. And the main two that we're going to talk about are Food Depot Alamo Terre. So they're the food distribution network for all of the provincial food banks. And so what we're, what we plan with them is that we'll take on the food transformation side and the food rescue side, and we'll use their existing trucking network. So what's happened since two thousand and nineteen, when everybody had to come and meet the truck and unload the things, is that FDA has developed a complete to-the-door model for all the food banks. So every Wednesday I get a call from the truck driver coming from FDA saying, hey, I'll be at your spot in about half an hour and I'll offload all the food that's coming from FDA this week. So what he does is he does a loop and he gets a few food banks up, Fredericton and up towards the west in the same truckload and he drops them, but then he takes that empty truck and he boogies back down to Moncton to load up again. So he said, what if instead of that empty truck going back, that truck was being filled with product that we're creating in our food rescue center? And then the only real difference is the extra weight in the truck. Truck's going to travel the same number of miles. And they said, that's a perfect idea. Anything we can do to increase the volume of food to the food bank network, the better. The second partner, of course, Second Harvest Canada, they're the source side of things because they're, as I said, they're the biggest mover of food rescue in the nation. We've developed over the course of the last four years to support this upcoming project. So it's a very strong board of directors that keeps me and my staff accountable toward our organizational goals. Of course, we've increased our staffing with strong leadership, a whole variety of different necessary supports that we can take this project on. So this is a draft of our drawing, it's a rendering of our building. So it's a sixty-five hundred square foot facility that includes three main components. So the first component, a thirty-four hundred square foot climate-controlled triage center. So if we can go back to our parable of the carrots, imagine that that whole tractor trailer load came to this new facility. We'd be able to bring it into the first part of the center, which is that triage center, and evaluate its quality and its condition. Are these carrots basically freshly harvested? Do they have six weeks of life left in them? Do they have two weeks of life left in them? These questions become critically important when you're talking about flowing them through the food network. If the food has six weeks of life, then we talk to FDA and say, how fast does food move through? Can you take five pallets now? Can you take ten pallets now to get them through in those six weeks? Or less or more, whatever makes sense. Because in our ideal world, the best food is the least processed. So if we can give people carrots as they came out of the ground, that's probably better than giving them something else. However, if those carrots have two weeks of life left in them, the reality is you can't get them to the food bank network to get them to the food bank clients before they're starting to go bad. So that's where the second part of our facility comes in, and that's a fifteen hundred square foot commercial-grade kitchen where we'll be able to peel, dice, steam, freeze, and package those carrots. And then we'll have them in a frozen product that will be able to be distributed for six months, a year, however long we need to to get that out into the network. Now, the flash frozen carrot niblets may not be quite as good as the raw carrot that came out of the ground, but they're awful close. We're not significantly impacting the health of the carrots. What we've done is now increased the longevity. We've taken care of the resource that otherwise could have gone to waste. The third part of our facility is the commercial-grade refrigeration and freezer units so that when we do process those large volumes of food, we can hold them at the appropriate temperatures until they can be moved to FDA for distribution throughout the network. So we have a number of rationale points that we want to highlight as why our food rescue center is worthy of funding. Because we're going to be increasing the quality and quantity of food going to food bank hampers, we begin to mitigate the long-term health outcomes, long-term health outcomes that go along with being chronically food insecure. So by doing that, we're also going to get it to over seventy agencies that are existing within our province that are looking for more food resources. And this could include school food programs, boys and girls clubs, all sorts of things that are connected through the FDA network beyond just the food bank network. One thing I'm super excited about is the ability for us to reimagine how food banks purchase food. Currently, if we need to distribute peas to clients, we go to distributor, we go to a store, we go to someone to see if we can purchase peas, typically canned peas, just the way it is. But with the ability with a food rescue center and a food processing facility, we could go to a farmer at the beginning of the year and say, okay, we're, in two thousand and twenty-three, we serve twenty-one thousand food hampers. A little over that, twenty-one thousand food hampers. What if we wanted to give each food hamper one pound frozen peas? That means we need twenty-one thousand pounds of peas. What if we go to a local farmer and say, hey, we'd like to have twenty-one thousand pounds of peas. Could you grow that many for us this year that we can process in the fall and give out for the next calendar year? And what if that farmer said, I can do that, but I need this, I need this investment upfront so I can actually do the planting and get the? So it could completely revolutionize the way that food banks look to purchase food to provide for the clients by supporting local agriculture. Of course, this is, once again, a proof of concept building that we're trying to create here so we can have this move to other parts of. We said Atlantic Canada, but in conversations with food banks Canada, they're keen on seeing this work so they can see glory across the country because this is something that's not really being done large scale across the country. And then, of course, we're bridging the gap. So what Greener Village does in its current class-five kitchen, and Mr. Holman knows this from Chef Yves, is that we have a number of renters. We have a number of people who come in who are almost micro businesses. They want to sell at the market. We have a gentleman from Brazil who makes sausages. Well, he isn't, he's not able to make the sausages in his own kitchen. It's against the, it's against the law to do that. It's against food safety. He needs a licensed kitchen to do that in. So he comes and rents our kitchen, spends a couple hours cranking a wheel and making sausages, and then he sells them at the market. He can't possibly do that if he has to build himself a kitchen or he has to buy a kitchen or he has to retrofit a kitchen. It's too expensive. He has to scale his business up. And that's what he's working on, but while he works on that, he needs that facility. So our facility now is for the micro businesses. But once you get to a certain point, our kitchen no longer functions when you're in that realm. So we have a fellow who was making barbecue sauce. He started with us making barbecue sauce. Now he's in SoVes and Superstore. He can't make a barbecue sauce in our kitchen. We don't have that kind of equipment. So now he's co-packing in Nova Scotia because that's all that he can do. So this kitchen will also take on the next realm of the medium-sized businesses before they actually go to creating their own facilities. So he has some significant progress. This number is not actually perfectly accurate. We actually have about two point nine million in secured funding to date. With some significant foundations, as you can see there. We also have some government support from municipal government. Municipal government's leading the way on this, which is kind of exciting to us. So the city of Fredericton has actually committed two years of the capital strategic partnership grant. And the village of New Maryland has committed to a first year of a multi-funding year agreement as well. We believe in the next two to three weeks, we'll hear from the provincial government on where they're going to come in on this thing. We believe it's going to be fairly significant in the investment side. I think I have that on the next slide. And then the federal government usually waits for everybody else to make their decisions and then they decide, okay, yeah, we should probably be involved as well. So as you can see, we're doing fairly well, just about two-thirds of the way there. With, we're still in what's called the quiet phase of fundraising campaign, which means that you line things up so that you're already successful before you go to the general public and say, hey, help us cross the finish line. And so we're planning that cross-the-finish-line stage now. On May eighth, we're having a launch event for our public phase where Michael McCain from Abley Foods is going to be doing a keynote speech with Blair Hislop, the CEO and co-owner of Mrs. Dunster's Donuts. And I'm going to be moderating, so I'm nervous about that already. So that's going to be a launch event that formally launches our campaign to the public. So we've requested from the province of New Brunswick a one million dollar investment to help us get where we need to go to be able to finish that campaign. And there's a breakdown of the expenses, which I think Sherry has this slideshow presentation as well, so if you want to have a copy of it, you can get it right from her. So I have the other vision of this thing being a collaborative event, partners in our community helping us have a healthy and well New Brunswick. So we're asking anyone who will listen and everyone who will listen to engage with us, whether that's through letters of support or whether that's through financial support or just a formal acknowledgement of this being something that is worthwhile for our communities and helpful. And I appreciate the time and I know I've probably gone over the twenty minutes that I told Sherry I would keep it to, but try my best. Thank you.
Question, if you don't mind, again.
I, I'm good for any questions as long as the marriage goes.
We're good. This is very important to the community.
One of the primary foods, especially for them, children's milk.
Right.
Even though the Canada Health Food Guide actually brought milk. How much support do you get from the, to AgriPure and Saputo or IG Baxter's and Otham?
Yeah, so we have a formal partnership with AgriPure. It is a purchasing partnership and they give us discounted rates. It's still expensive. Milk is one of our highest expenses for us to provide to our clients. I think we spent in two thousand and twenty-three probably. I think we spent in twenty twenty-three probably sixty-five, seventy thousand dollars on milk alone. Cause that's not something that gets donated in a, in enough qua- quantity for us to be able. So one thing that Greener Village does, and it, I certainly would invite you guys to come and have a tour at any time and I could show you some of these things in person, but. One thing that we're keen on is making sure that the food hamsters are consistent. So you don't come to Greener Village one month and get milk because it was available and pasta sauce because it was available. You get the same sort of things each and every month. And we apply money from our own fundraising to make sure that that is always consistent. So you don't have issues where a family doesn't receive milk. No family has not received milk for I don't even know how long. At, at, there's probably a time in our history where we did it in a smaller way, but it's something that we're very keen on doing. So we, we spent uh hopeful four hundred thousand dollars on food purchasing in twenty twenty-three alone. And that's on milk, eggs, produce, and then keeping the food donations above a certain level. So if. There's no canned vegetables, then we buy canned vegetables. If there's no canned soup, then we buy canned soup to make sure that those hamsters maintain that consistency level. But milk's a huge one, absolutely.
And the reason I ask is at beef with mine, I'm still working hard somewhere, is that the uh price of a four liter milk retail in Nova Scotia is six seventy-eight. And the price of a four liter jug of milk in this province is eight twenty-nine.
Right.
And the New Brunswick firm processing mission set a wholesale price and you're not allowed to sell less than wholesale at eight oh eight. For a, for a liter whole, when the, when the retail price in Nova Scotia is six seventy-eight.
Yeah, that doesn't always make a lot of sense, but unfortunately, we're kind of uh. Yeah, we, we make, we make do with what we can do. Uh, milk is a hard one too, cause we've seen a few milk increases this past year. Um, when milk increases hit us, we're, we're buying four thousand, five thousand liters of milk a month. So when you're purchasing at that level, food demand, food bank demand goes up and milk goes up by a tiny little bit, it's a double whammy. But so you just.
Five thousand liters worth of milk a month.
Yeah, that's a pretty low, whereas one of the larger, not like main chain grocery stores, suppliers, purchasers of milk.
I know they offered discounts for their school programs as well. Is it comparable to your school program discount?
Yeah, similar.
Counselor Fox.
I'm wondering, um, how, I'm trying to figure out how it works in terms of reducing waste. So in terms of that, like, are you, where are you sourcing your, your food from for, for this?
Right, so a, a few different ways. Um, one of them is through that Second Harvest partnership that I mentioned. So what Second Harvest does, and. And they're doing this already and, and fairly successfully is they are in contact with potential donors of food that is in risk of waste. And they then try to connect them with parterae agencies that can take on that food. And they do that very well in New Brunswick, especially on the small side. Meaning, oh, I've got a couple boxes of food, or I've got a leftover thing from an event, or I've got something like that. What's harder for them is the, is the person who says, I got a tractor trailer load of food. Because there's just no real resource available to say, oh, yeah, we can take that full tractor trailer load. So. What they end up trying to do is try to find ten agencies they can split the tractor trailer load up with, which a lot of the donors say, no. I'm not sending my truck to ten different places. That's way too much. What else can you do? And then what Second Harvest will say is, well, we can send it to Montreal. And they say, okay, that, that's easier for us in the long term than ten different stops. So a lot of food that's in a large volume gets shipped out of province, which breaks my heart because we got hungry people here. The West already has more resources than we have available anyways. We can't send our resources out there. Um, and then, of course, we're gonna be looking to, one thing that is not wholesale in our community yet, is a true commitment to not wasting food. Because wasting food sometimes is easier than putting in the work to save the food. So what, what we wanna say is we have this center, we have this capability. Entrust us with that, with that food that you don't, you can no longer utilize. What we currently do in a very small scale course, cause our facilities are limited. We evaluate the food that we get donated, the boxes of food, and we say, this is fit for human consumption, it goes to clients. If it's not fit for human consumption, it goes to livestock. If it's not fit for livestock consumption, it goes to compost. If we can't compost it, then it goes to the garbage. So that's our kind of four-step process, how we're going to, how we're doing it now. We're just gonna turn it into a larger scale. We had to encourage people, this is how we do it. Let's get, let's all get on the bandwagon. There's. There's zero reason to waste food if we have people in our community who do not have enough food. I, I don't think it's criminal, but it should be. There's something, there is definitely wrong with wasting resources when people can't afford to feed their kids.
Some sense more or less, a central distribution center.
What's that?
A central distribution center.
Yeah, yeah, and, and about the facilities too, like, so FDA has distribution capabilities in the province. They don't have the ability to say, how do we keep this from going to waste? How do we make sure that we do more local? I mean, we, we have an abundance of land in New Brunswick. We could be doing better on agriculture. What we have is very constrained seasons. Once November hits, you're done. And before November hits, from like end of September to like end of October, you've got more food than you could possibly shake a stick at. But then why? So, you know, you can't eat all the food in two months and then start all winter. That's just not how the human physiology works. Um, so what we're saying is let's, let's do better at producing food and then putting the right investment into taking care of that food. So that resources can go to people.
Counselor Pecan.
This fantastic project, it sounds like it's just an incredible thing to do. And I'd love to see it expand completely countrywide and even further than that. Um, I guess the question would be, what's the specific ask for us with this? You know, you said, I mean, Maryland just could put into this, well, it's too bad that we didn't see this when we were in budget season last term. Uh, last quarter, to be able to budget for it now. But I guess that would be the next two part of this question would be, what is the ask? And can this be delayed until we can budget for it if we're gonna say, for example, match what Maryland's doing? Which is the third perfect question, what is exactly the Maryland?
That's, that's a great multi-part question. Um, so we all come into meetings like these with the municipality like yourselves. Who have hopes of priorities that you're trying to fund with a specific ask. Because we're not, it's, it's easier to do that with a company, you know, the profit margin, you know, all the pieces and you go to. You go to a large company and say, we believe that this is the place that you wanna be. Well, if it comes to you today, it's, it's in hopes that you believe it's a worthy project of support. And we believe you to decide what that support looks like. And I said the same thing to New Maryland, cause they asked me the same question. And um, and what it means to us is, is very much about being able to say. Municipalities in our, in our Ketchmon area, in our greater Fredericton area are behind this project. And that helps us then with provincial governments to say, hey, why do we have multiple municipalities who are saying this is a good project and you guys haven't moved yet? It helps people, when people say, oh, Hamilton's on this, oh, New Maryland's on this, oh, Fredericton's on this. They say, wow, this, this project has obviously. Reached a lot of people already. Um, so I don't have a specific ask for you. It's that question I really can't answer, because I leave that to your wisdom. Because you folks know your budgets and you know what you have available. Um, is it possible to delay the project in the, in, in the, for the next budget season? I would answer that in a no, but that's okay matter, in that we're, we're charging forward and. We recognize that this facility is long overdue, very needed. So we're gonna move forward for that. However, the, the need for funding will probably continue over the next two to three years before the building is completely up, operational and running.
Yeah, so it wasn't necessarily so, I, that may have worded improperly, not a matter of, you delay the project to wait for funding from us, but more of. Can we have a future commit to it so that we can properly budget for it?
Absolutely.
If we're gonna manage Maryland.
Yeah, so something that would be more than possible, and I'm not making suggestions, please don't say that. Um, you know, it certainly would be acceptable to say, we wanna commit X number of dollars for over the next five years. And we're not gonna start making those payments until the beginning of twenty twenty-five. And we have a number of funding commitments of that two point nine million that we have, that are multi-year pledges. So there are people who've said, here's a payment and we're gonna give you another payment next year, another payment the year after. That's part of the large-scale philanthropic giving that, that we're comfortable with, that we ha- and that we have plans for. To make sure that we have the resources available to accomplish what we need to at the right times.
So I, so I'm just trying to figure this out. So in terms of you're looking at some, I guess it's a multiple. It's, it's more than one question again.
Sure.
Um, so. First question is, are you looking at building this, this year, this calendar year? And secondly, um, so if we were to look at something for, that we could budget for in the future, so would you, if you build it this year, would you like get a mortgage? And then, and, and, you know, kinda go from there? And then as the money came in, you'd be able to pay down your mortgage, or how does that?
Yeah, exactly. So, so we have already spoken with multiple banks on, on, basically it's called bridge financing. So not a formal mortgage, cause we do believe based on the fundraising success we're seeing so far, we're not gonna need a significant mortgage. That costs us money. We don't wanna spend money that we don't have to spend. Um, but we do, we do have bridge financing agreements that are pretty much in place, ready to, to take us there. Because the plan is at the current time to break ground in the fall. Based on the fundraising success we've been seeing, we wanna, we wanna get this thing up and operational as soon as possible. So. That would probably mean we're actually functionally transforming food. Late spring, early summer of twenty twenty-five. That's the, that's the hope.
Yeah, something I could suggest, you might wanna run up the flame pole with the, with the province. Is we've had several mandated services passed on to the RSC, which is passed on to us, which is passed on to the, the rate payer that pays the taxes. But a lot of those mandated services are gonna be next to impossible to deliver on. This service, if it was mandated, it would be certainly be deliverable and it would benefit, you know, all of the poverty within New Brunswick. So that might be something to approach the current government on, cause there, there's, see, they've been mandating lots of services down to the taxpayer.
Okay.
So just something to keep in mind. I think that would be a worthwhile mandated service in my mind anyway.
I like the way you mentioned that. I, I've never heard that terminology, the mandated service. You guys are much more familiar with that than I am, but.
Well, we got about seven or eight mandated services that we're, our residents are paying taxes on. And I think some of them are gonna be just about next to impossible to, to deliver on. So, but this would be, certainly be deliverable and certainly you would, you know, you would see that kind of the fruit of your labor. So that might be something that you could approach the government on.
Yeah, thank you for that. That, that's very helpful.
So that was one of my questions was, has the regional service commission?
Well, it's not, it's not the regional service commission, it's the province. The province mandated those services on to the regional service.
Yes, exactly.
Mandate, who puts them on to us.
But have they been approached is what I was wondering.
Yeah, so we have had conversations with Suzanne White from the regional service commission. Um, and we've, we're working on getting a meeting with their executive director. And his name is completely.
John Smith.
Yes.
Easy name to remember.
Yeah, it should be. It should be, but obviously.
John Hancock's first cousin.
Um, so yeah, we're, we're certainly approaching this with a wide, wide angle. We don't really believe that this is a project that really only appeals to a very small group in the public. I think this is very appealing to the entire public, cause I think everyone hates waste. We don't really wanna do it, but we do it because it's just convenient or it's what we're used to. Um, and everyone hates hungry, the thought of people not having enough food. I mean, there's just something that's, it makes you feel gross. And, and that's why, that's why you see World Vision commercials and they have hungry kids on it, because they know it's gonna make you feel unhappy and it's gonna make you react. And, and they're, and they're not wrong for doing that, because there's something wrong with having hungry, hungry kids.
I just wanna make a comment. I think it's a wonderful project and I think that um, it's definitely something that could benefit our community. I just really hope that this project serves to break down some of the stigma associated with being hungry. Like I think we can attach to the fact that we've received things from community members. Who wish to remain anonymous, or we've seen posts from people on social media who wish to remain anonymous. And I really hope that. We could somehow use this project, or you know, you folks could use this project to um, make being hungry more visible. Like ma- make it something that, you know, people often have trouble acknowledging uncomfortable things, right? You know, that makes me weak or makes me vulnerable if I acknowledge that I don't have enough food to eat. But like, I hope that this at least, you know. Brings that. It, it's such a wonderful project.
Yeah, and I, I would, as, as a response to that, I would certainly encourage again and, and, and offer at any time for you to reach out to come and have a tour of what we do now. I think you'll find that Greener Village is significantly, if you've ever been there before, is significantly different than what people associate food bank thoughts with. Uh, we do a pilot programming specifically with that intent. Uh, so that if you drive by Greener Village and you see someone's car, you're not making a judgment call on why they're there. You're not thinking, oh, that person's there because they need the food bank. We just have a whole host of activities that are going on all the time. To try to encourage people to be engaged, because there is no shame in needing help. And there is no shame in giving help. If you are in the position right now that you need it, you might be the one that needs it next time.
Okay, and one, and one last question, Counselor Fox. That's not just for Counselor Fox, that's for everybody.
I also agree. It's, it's, it's an amazing pro- program. Greener Village is awesome. I've been on tours before, seen it. I would recommend that we set up a tour um, to be able to go and see what's happening there, just to give everybody a better understanding of. Of what currently exists there, cause that might help us um, when it comes to making a decision about this project.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your presentation. It is eye-opening and certainly enlightening. And it, uh, it's good information for all of us to consider. There's no question about that.
And thank you, cause I know the Handwell municipality has supported Greener Village. So this is a, we aren't necessarily a new organization too. Supported in a number of ways through, through various fundraising programs. So we appreciate that. It really takes, it takes a village to help people. And that's what we're all about.
Takes a village to raise a child.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you very much.
I'm Doug Johnson, and I'm the president of Kingswood Ventures. And this is Paul Sherman, who's the general manager of the Radisson. And we want to talk about the tourism accommodation levy and how it applies to the Radisson. And uh, in terms of what we can spend our money on with that levy. So I'm not sure if you're familiar with it, but the Radisson collects three point five percent in tax for every guest that, that comes in. And we give that money to the Handwell. We used to give it to Fredericton. Um, but recently we were switched to you folks again, and we're happy with that. We're overlooked in Fredericton. Uh, so according to your bylaw, the uh levy is split thirty-seventy. Thirty percent to the Handwell and seventy percent for the Radisson spending. And the government guidelines for that spending is that it should be on tourism promotion. So it's very loose, very broad. Um, at present, we only spend it on one thing. We make a monthly request for Expedia and Google payments. That's our only advertising that we do, other than free social media that we handle ourselves. Uh, last year, we spent approximately thirty-six thousand dollars on that. And it generated a twelve to one return. Online advertising with Expedia and Google, they're very precise, tell you exactly what your dollars generate, bring back to you in revenue. So it's really nice, not like that radio lab. So my understanding is that you've approved that Google Expedia uh purchasing until twenty twenty-four. And you weren't certain um, going forward what you want to do. Uh, so we're here to try to encourage you to keep going in that direction with us. Uh, so that we can uh keep that, we, we'll keep the advertising going anyway. But we, we have some money coming in and we'd like to put to that promotion and it's very effective. Uh, the second thing we would like to spend money on uh this year is highway signage. And we would like to get uh some of those blue, two of those blue uh provincial tourism signs. Much like you'll see uh for Kingsland. Um, I think they're very effective. Uh, they sort of give the impression that your tourism spot is government sanctioned. And uh, this would be a sign for Kingswood Resort, because that's the draw. Uh, with the, the Radisson included. So Kingswood Resort, meaning Kingswood Golf, Kingswood Entertainment Center, which is the largest entertainment center in Atlanta, Canada. And uh, the Radisson.
Sam's needs.
And Sam's, sorry. Um, so those signs are about twelve thousand dollars each for an eighteen-year term. So it's a really uh good investment, good return on investment. Uh, and any upkeep that you have to, that's necessary. Um, so we're, we're hoping you guys can consider that and let us know. Um, my guess is that with the buildup in our funds that we have, we should be able to move forward with those signs um relatively quickly. Um, as well, we have a sign on the highway. Um, you've probably seen it, sort of kitty corner to the Irving sign uh for the Radisson. And that thing takes a lot of wind and needs refurbishing every now and then. And we just did a refurbishing job on it. And it's much brighter than it was. And we'd like to apply uh some money to that repair as well. And uh, we can, if you guys are interested in that and think. And we can, if you guys are interested in that and think that's appropriate, uh, we can let you know what that amount is. And that's it.
Any questions for Mr. Johnson?
Not really, it's pretty straightforward.
What about billboards, like al- along the highway? Have you guys considered that or what's the story in that now? I see some, the province had disallowed them for a while, but are they back in vogue now or what?
We've had two. Um, so the hotel opened in twenty eighteen, we had two, uh, in March. And we had two immediately. And we did not find them effective. Especially when compared to this provincial sign, um, which is really an eye catcher for the tourists. And it's much closer to the highway. So you have to have a certain distance with those billboards. They're very backset. Um, these provincial swat signs are right up there, just like a normal traffic sign.
Any other questions, comments?
Can I just add one thing?
Yeah.
The advertising is really important to us because we have to drive a lot of the business to us ourselves because we're relocated. Like Doug said, we were often forgotten with Fredericton. We would get the, you know, if there was a big, something big in Fredericton, we would get some of the business. But we have to drive all the business to ourselves. So the Google Ads and the Expedia Ads really bring in a lot of business to the area, to the golf course, to the hotel, to Hanwell. Um, so that part is very important to us that we, that we are allowed to continue with that. Because that really helps drive the business to them.
Excellent. For one dollar, every one dollar you spend, you get four dollars back. That's an amazing ratio. For sure, I wish my bank would pay that. Anyway, uh, you know, your establishment is very important to Hanwell and the citizens of Hanwell. And we'll certainly take it under advisement and do whatever we can. Because it's it's a great asset to have in the community. You know, the whole town seems needs the golf course, the entertainment center and any future development that you guys are looking at. It just, it's ama- it's amazing location, it's great. All right, well, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item eight, billing permits. One for December, which doesn't surprise me, not that many people start billing in December. Looks like a regular house out on Valley Lane. Proclamation, there is not any and petitions and delegations also none. Business arising. We have item A bylaw thirty-two twenty twenty-four, respecting dangers around sighted premises, second reading by title. Somebody want to read that for us?
I move that bylaw thirty-two dash twenty twenty-four, a bylaw respecting dangers around sighted premises be given its second reading by title.
I'll second that.
Questions, comments, all those in favor, oops, sorry, we have a question.
Uh, I'm not sure, it's an appropriate time to ask, but I do have a question about the, uh, the bylaw enforcement officer. Assume that is the service commission provides.
Yeah, that's the caper of the service commission, they have a bylaw enforcement officer. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those contrary minded, motion carried.
A bylaw number thirty-two dash twenty twenty-four, a bylaw respecting dangers around sighted premises.
Item B, the EMO emergency plan. I'm assuming everybody's got a copy of that and has read it over. So I need a motion.
I can, I can move that the Hanwell emergency plan amended January seventeenth, twenty twenty four. Be adopted as the official Hanwell emergency plan effective January seventeenth, twenty twenty four.
Seconded, okay. Questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried. Okay, correspondence from Minister Ames, RE Deerwood Drive, I need a motion.
I move to receive correspondence from Minister Richard Ames advising Mayor Morrison that council's concerns about highway erosion and the washouts on Deerwood Drive have been remedied.
Any questions, comments? My comments is they did a fantastic job on those two spots where they were eroding. They were quick to react and they did a, they dumped a lot of heavy rock in there. So it's certainly going to be helpful and we certainly appreciate DTI being as expedient as they were and getting that.
Did do a good job. I've noticed however, um, my end at Deerwood, that there seems to be little settlements and we'll see after.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary minded, motion carried. Correspondence from mayor and clerk to Minister Savoy, RE property assessment, Minister Savoy's response.
I move to receive the correspondence between Mayor Morrison and Arnold Glen Savoy with respect to concerns that an assessment of a property at Hanwell may not have been met for record.
I'll second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried, thank you. Correspondence from Elementary Literacy looking for a donation.
So don't we talk about this a little bit?
Yes.
You guys had donated to them last year. They, um, they're the ones that do the school reading programs. Um, and it's a free service offer to any students in the schools that need it. And it's used both at Hamill Park Academy and Kings Claire.
The next question, horse will be tomorrow, will be had given them last year.
I think it was five hundred.
I move to accept the correspondence from Elementary Literacy with respect to making a donation to support their free after-school reading programs and authorize and direct the clerk to make a donation in the amount of five hundred dollars.
I'll second.
Questions, comments, all those in favors, oops, sorry, Councilor Breakoff.
I just do have a question, but there's a lot of really good causes, I really like the Greener Village presentation. There's going to be many of them through the year, but I don't have an understanding of the budget that we have for supporting all of these. And how do we make decisions on that? I mean, if, uh, when, we don't even know what's coming through the year.
We usually make a decision based on how much we've had, we have, how much we've given out, how much we have left. So we try to, we try to keep some in reserve so as donations come in, we have something to give them. We we haven't ran out yet, so. So what do we, what's our total budget?
I don't know, we we haven't, this is our first meeting of twenty twenty four, I'm not sure.
But we'd have to, it would be in the budget, you'd have to, if you refer to last year's, like, the approved budget for twenty twenty four. I'm thinking five thousand.
I'm thinking that too, actually, yeah.
Something you can ask after our pressure.
I'll look closely, I don't recall seeing it in the budget.
Yeah, there's a budget.
There's a budget. I forget what it is, but that seems what I remember.
Yeah, I think it's five thousand, we can confirm with our secretary once she returns.
And it is usually for like this level of, you know, it's not a million-dollar budget. We make a large donation to, if we're going to support like Greener Village, for example, we want to make a bigger donation, we would have to budget that one separately. This is mostly for, uh, this type of thing, community events and, um, you know, smaller, you know, donations that come up over the year. And we don't know until they come.
But your point is well taken, but that's an excellent program, Greener Village is offering, so. Unfortunately, for a large amount, they missed our budget presentation, but we can see what we can do with a certain book hard into it. Councilor McGinn?
Yeah, for things like that, we do have a grants and donations policy. And it's, uh, the intent is for stuff like that to be done before budget season so that we can budget for the next type of thing. Because that would be, wouldn't, the the small budget that we have for things like this that have come up now are are for, literally intended for small things like this through the year and like, uh, the mayor said, we didn't have it run out yet. Uh, and if we, if we did, there is some little leeway, we can move things around a bit. Something like that, though, like a major project like that, we'd, we'd definitely need multi-year planning and like bases and stuff like that. So we'd need to have some discussion with that before the next budget.
And that's, that's not taking them out of the, out of this year in a, you know, in a smaller donation for this year first, that's with a certain consideration. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Most contrary minded, motion carried. Correspondence from EMO Department of Public Safety, RE, thank you.
I move to receive the correspondence from EMO expressing gratitude for our support in providing warmish shelters for our residents during the power outages in December.
Questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary minded, motion carried, thank you. Correspondence from resident, RE, thank you.
I move to receive the correspondence from a resident expressing gratitude for assistance during the power outages in December.
Second. Questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary minded, motion carried. We have a donation request for the U eighteen Canadian Curling Championships.
So I'm going to speak with this real quick. This one received to me today, it was sent today. Um, there's a, a, a boy in our, in Hanwell who has just been named to represent New Brunswick at the twenty twenty four U eighteen Curling Championships in Ottawa. So she was just wondering if there'd be any, if anybody would be able to support him on that.
It's nice to hear that we have a young Hanweller getting involved in the Canadian Curling Championships.
Yeah, we used to always, it used to be a team that we had for years, so we, it was before your time, that we sponsored every year. So this is just a donation for one person.
For one, for just, just one person.
Just one person, yeah, yeah.
Have we done it for one individual in the past or has it been mostly for the team?
One year, one for a while there, the whole team lived in Hanwell and another time we donated to just the one person.
Yeah, remember donating to somebody, go to some, it was some basketball tournament or something, somewhere.
The curlers, but yeah, there was a basketball.
I move to receive.
You go ahead, I can comment on your, after you create the motion.
I move to receive correspondence from a resident who was one of the two athletes chosen representing the president in the twenty twenty four Canada under eighteen curling championships at Hanwell from February fourth to the eleventh, or to the tenth.
So we need an amount for donation, what would we say, a hundred dollars?
I was thinking two. Yeah, two fifty is fine.
No, nobody's seconded it yet, motions on the floor.
I'll second and recommend two fifty. Can I do that? Since you didn't put a big dollar figure in.
So we, yeah, we have it the seconded and we have a, a suggestion. Any comments or concerns, Councilor Fox?
So, well, I think we should support this person to a certain amount. The motion that's on the floor does not have an amount attached to it, so I'm not sure where we go from here.
We need to amend.
Men to amend it.
My apologies, I didn't see the seconded.
Okay.
It should be accept, not receive.
Accept, not receive, yeah, and so, um.
So would you like to just read it again?
It's on the floor now, it's been seconded, so we'd have to, you'd have to pull it back and withdraw motion if you want.
Needed amount, is it two fifty, Counselor Heisler?
We need to rescind the motion prior to, uh, voting or making, we need to rescind it and then we need to make another motion.
No, pardon, or you could just amend it if you wanted to.
You could do it either way, but.
It would be withdrawn instead of this. Any comment to that too? If we, if it was less than two hundred fifty, the mayor has, is authorized, just for people might not be aware of, for new, new councillors. The mayor is authorized to be able to give a grant for up to a hundred fifty dollars without the authorization counts.
So if somebody wants to read it in a minute, motion for the amount of two hundred fifty dollars?
I'd like to amend the motion to say to make a donation in an amount of two hundred fifty dollars.
I'll second that.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, in favor of making a donation for two hundred fifty dollars, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried, thank you.
Now we vote on the amended motion. You voted, we voted to make the amendment.
Right.
The original motion's still on the floor with the amended difference on it.
So we can, can we vote on the a minute motion?
Yeah.
Commentary, yeah. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary minded, motion carried, thank you, council. Item thirteen, mayor's report, I'm assuming everybody has seen the mayor's report. Can I get a motion to receive?
Move to receive the mayor's report is presented.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary minded, motion carried, thank you. Item fourteen, uh, committee reports. Age-friendly committees on hold. Emergency measures did not meet in December, next meeting will be on December, January twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. Environmental stewardship committee on hold, uh, finance did not meet. Governance and policies did not meet. Infrastructure and parks did not meet. Matter of fact, community liaison committee meets quarterly, Council Regal.
Quarterly and, uh, like, if I can speak to that, I did get a seat on that committee. Uh, the next meeting is March twenty first.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you very much for stepping up. And item H is the rural plan review meets as required.
And it will be on January twenty fifth.
Okay, and item fifteen, the C O treasurer's report, there's no perfor. Oh, sorry, Councilor Breakoff.
I just have a question, but the age-friendly committee, did we not agree that that is?
Okay, so we can't do anything with this until we've changed the committee policy. So until, or things need to be changed before I can start removing stuff.
So we'll have to wait for a governance committee meeting.
It'll be soon, yeah, probably after Kerry goes back.
Okay, so it didn't work. So there's no C O treasurer's report. Uh, older on tennis business, I don't believe there's anything to report on the recreation building or the rural plan in progress. Come again?
On the recreation building, we're hoping for next month, for next, um, management session to, to have a report.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, new business is the accommodation levy, which was, uh, talked about, presented, presentation by Mr. Johnson and the manager of the hotel tonight.
I'd like to make a motion for that. So whereas a motion was made in August twenty twenty-three to reimburse monthly costs for the advertising and marketing program Inspire ROI for the tax levy fees that are collected, uh, each month by the Radisson Hotel to a maximum of thirty-six hundred dollars per month until the summer thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And whereas Doug Johnson, the general manager, has stated that the program has had tremendous positive impact on their business and Mr. Johnson did a presentation to council this evening. I hereby move that the C O treasurer be permitted to reimburse the monthly costs for the advertising marketing program Inspire ROI for the Radisson Hotel, Kingswood Entertainment Golf Course, Samson Needs, from the tax levy fees that are collected each month by the Radisson Hotel to a maximum of thirty-six hundred dollars per month.
I don't know if that's a new amount, is that the old amount, thirty-six hundred?
It's the old amount, I'm not sure if there's a new amount. I'm not sure if it's more expensive or not.
Yes, it continues, so we're just.
There was an additional ask in there, so to be determined, I think, when we, uh, meet with our treasurer, might be appropriate.
I think that would be appropriate.
Because they additionally asked for.
With signage.
The signage.
Yeah, there was signage on the highway, signage. And and help maintain the Radisson, the big lit sign by the highway. So there's an additional ask in there. One was the provincial government sign and the other one was to maintain their signage of the Radisson, the big lit sign by the highway.
Right, but however, this, this motion is only about the, the, um.
Containing with a third of the money.
Like, like using the money for the advertising, right? But that's, that, that, and that would be another completely different motion because this is only for the advertising. This has nothing to do with the signs.
So we'll talk about.
So that would be something you guys have to discuss and do later.
Discuss that at a management meeting.
Okay, so the thirty-six hundred dollars is fair right now.
And to keeping, doing what we're doing right now, wasting it was. The most, the previous motion ended on thirty-first of December. So we're just looking to continue that and then we can discuss the management meeting.
And a seconded?
I'll second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary minded, motion carried, thank you. Okay, item eighteen, upcoming activities, Zoomers Mondays at two P M. and Thursdays at twelve. And we, we're not having a closed session tonight, uh, because of where it, uh, it stands right now and I'll, uh, we'll bring that up, there's an issue possibly going on that we, we're going to close the closed session tonight, we won't have it. We'll wait till our next meeting and see where we stand on that. So basically, the next date, time and location of the next meeting is regular council meeting, council chambers, February twenty first, twenty four at seven P M. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned at fourteen.